Okay, I am going to call the April 20th meeting of the Policy Committee to order. The time is 5:35. And first item on the agenda is just to review the minutes from February 18th. So I believe if you don't have the packet open, you can find it on the website. It was also emailed out to all the board members. So I'll give everybody a minute to look over the minutes. Okay, having given everybody a little time to look that over, are there any issues or changes needed to the minutes from the last meeting? See shaking heads? Okay, if there are no objections from the Board members, I'd like to accept these minutes as approved. Okay. Next item on our agenda is we are going to look over the graduation requirements for 2021. That is on. I don't know the page in the packet. It's right after the minutes. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Foreign. If you could walk us through the changes being proposed.
So actually, we're looking at changes for 2020 only. I know that I know it says 2020, 2021, but we're looking at changes for this year based on our current circumstances. We had a series of meetings involving all the high school principals, including Brookside, Satellite, and New Britain High School, guidance staff, academics, and some associate principal in charge of the senior class looked at our seniors and how the current circumstances were impacting them. We knew that we were going to have to propose a change based on the fact that capstone, which is not actually part of the state requirements, is is not going to be able to happen in the way that it would need to. During the course of that discussion, we we looked at the state requirements versus our current requirements. And it was it is recommended that we, for this year only, at this time, go with state requirements, which which is a 20 credit requirement with some less specificity. I said that correctly. If you look in your packet, what's there is the current requirements and everything is in red is not part of the state requirements. So most significantly is is a reduction in credits from 23. Capstone would bring that to 22, and the state requirements are 20. When we talked about the the impact of the second semester of the senior year on on students, especially our most at-risk students, satellite students, Brookside students, as well as many New Britain High School students, and the inability to provide the level of support that they need, the struggles with connectivity. It's our recommendation that for this year, given the current circumstances, that we go with the with the state requirements of 20 credits. I guess Damon and John may add the principals of New Britain High School and Satellite around the on the meeting as well. So if you have any questions for us, we certainly would be happy to answer about either the decision or the process that went into the decision. Laura Balki is also here and was part of that process.
Any board members have questions or things that they'd like to address?
All right, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Well, so essentially, everything that's in red here is being proposed to eliminate?
Eliminate for this year only.
For this year only.
Because it's not part of the state requirement, high school graduation requirements.
So just to walk that walk us through that, what we'd be what we'd be bringing to the board for just this year is English would just be four credits, any four credits. We're not specifying how. Math would be three credits. It's not specified what that has to be. Correct?
That's correct, yes.
And science, they would need to have two credits in any science. There are no state requirements as to how those credits. Okay. Social studies would just be three credits and half of it, a half credit would either have to be in civics or American government. Phys ed will reduce to one credit with no half credit of health required. Fine arts, one credit and six credits of electives.
That's correct.
We're also taking out all of the SAT and ACT requirements, as well as the in, you know, the English and mathematical proficiency language we have. And pretty much everything, everything down from there.
Again, those those proficiency requirements, while most of our students have met them, those seniors that have not will not have the opportunity to do so because of the current limitations. So those those would have come out or would have been recommended to come out anyway, along with capstone, just because of the lack of access.
So do we have a sense of how many students this is going to impact? Graduating and not graduating?
We we have, we did look at some numbers. We are looking at at-risk students. It's it's hard to put an exact number on it, but we have about 80 students right now, which is not unusual for this time of year, who are kind of on the fence. What is unusual is those students generally have a lot of support and rise up and make it. Again, a lot at Satellite, but also at New Britain High School. So I wouldn't say that 80 would definitely not graduate if if we didn't do this, but a significant percentage of those 80 students would likely be impacted.
As a very minor typographical thing, this is more a note for Kristen. When we're presenting the updated version to the board, all the way down at the bottom where we have you know, Roman numeral five for connect, it's sealed by literacy. That should be Roman numeral two. Because we're eliminating everything that's interceding.
Nick, I actually have a question as far as right below that for any Google references or citations. Is that applicable in this circumstance? Are there any references I need to cite to make this change?
I don't think there are any references that need to be cited for the change because really all we're doing is we're moving to the state minimums. Any other board members have any questions, concerns?
I think they answered all my questions. I was more concerned with the SAT and lack of access for families. So thank you.
Merrill? I just was wondering if we have any sense of how many other districts use the state minimum requirement versus having something higher?
I believe that was looked at, unless someone else can speak very directly to that. I know that that was something we looked at when we last adopted this, and there aren't very many districts that as a standard are at the bare minimum of the state. Does any anyone else have any additional information on that? Damon or Mark or Mike?
I can speak to the special ed side of it. Oftentimes, if a child is going to be short, depending on the disability and issues within their, you know, their program, we we can't do PPT defer to the statement, and that happens several times a year. And that happens across districts everywhere. And and when Mr. Foreign was speaking about the number of kids, you know, this is going to this situation in particular that we're dealing with right now, well, will impact our special needs kids. And so I think going to the 20 is going to be a big help for them. Because it allows us a lot more flexibility. For instance, if you're caught, you know, you don't have to take certain classes, we can identify, we can identify a class, a literature, you know, something they unelective as an English class or, you know, beekeeping class as a biology class, whatever, things like that. So we have a lot more flexibility with with courses than what else.
I don't I don't have a specific answer to Merrill's question, but I'll just briefly, and I think most of you probably know this. Districts over the last seven years have have moved up because the state had had proposed and then pulled back on changes that now are in effect for the for the 2023 school year. So over the last probably five or more years, there's been proposed changes that have that have passed the state and then been pushed back. So so my guess is that there are still a few, but but not as many because the jump from 20 to 25 is is pretty significant, and we will be at 25 for 2023. Obviously, the vast majority of our seniors will will meet the 23 requirement, will meet all those requirements in the in the in the current policy because they've been they've been programmed that way for the for the last four years. It's just those students that 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 are on the fence that that now now can't get the support around credit recovery efforts at at Satellite, which is which is strongly supported by staff. It's not like they they go home and work independently on credit recovery. So so and really, the reduction of of the electives allows. And even though the elective numbers have changed that much, most of the students have reached that elective number so they can concentrate on a math class or an English class that they need this semester to graduate and not have to, you know, put in maybe a tech ed or a business class at Satellite or at New Britain High School.
I can speak for Newington because I have a senior this year who needed 21 credits to graduate. So and they they stayed 21 right up through this year, and then they went then they went to 25 for classes beyond for 2021 and beyond. That helped.
Yep.
Thank you. The other thing that I I think it would be important to just include possibly in the, since we're adopting this for you know, just this one year for the class of 2020, is I I would like to have something in there just specifying the reasoning of yeah, even if it's before Roman numeral one, something along the lines of the board in response to the you know, need for distance learning due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The Board of Ed is hereby changing the graduation requirements. Just so it's very clear when people look at this policy that it is that this reduction is being made in response to a need and not, you know, a quote unquote dumbing down of our graduation. I think that's just important from a public perspective standpoint.
So that's that's fine, Nick. I can draft something tomorrow and maybe run it by you, Laura, and then we'll get it to Kristen by the end of the week.
I know at our last meeting, you had mentioned wanting to establish what we were going to have for 2021 because of changes that are upcoming and getting the program book out for freshmen and all of that. For the incoming freshman class and what their graduation requirements are going to be, is that something that we put on the back burner for now, understanding that we may not get it? You know, on a board agenda until closer to June? Damon?
Yeah. We've we've put in the general framework for that, and the subcommittee in the board has actually already seen that. All we were waiting on is really tidying up all that legalese language that followed afterwards. The committee has met to review that. So that may be something we could submit for your perusal at the next policy meeting, Mike. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. I just I didn't want us in the current situation to lose sight of what happens next.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or concerns on that? Diane's been very quiet. I think she's there.
But muted. Can I just throw in a little bit of
I'm here, sorry.
A little bit of color commentary on the graduation requirement piece. In in my work in leading up to the new graduation requirements for the incoming freshmen, I took a look back at three previous years on how many credits students graduated with. And anywhere from 45 to 49% of our seniors already graduate within excess of 25 credits. So for a significant chunk of our student body, this isn't going to have a significant or meaningful impact on it. Really, as Mike said, it's just helping out our our most vulnerable and struggling learners who lack the resources and the supports that they would normally receive.
Okay, so with no objections with the changes that we discussed that we'll get through Laura to Kristen, this will be sent to the board for approval on our next at our next regular meeting. All good, Kristen? Okay. Next item on the agenda is our policy statement over access to internet. So the policy itself is a one-pager, but we also have in our in our packet, the administrative procedures for that. So I believe, Mark, you asked to have this on, so I was going to turn this over to you.
Okay, hi. I have to switch back and forth between screens. I don't have that capacity to look at the document and look at you guys at the same time. Okay, yeah. Well, I thought we might look at it, just given the fact that we're in this new environment. And it might be wise just to review it and make sure that it meets our needs currently. It was adopted, you know, almost 20 years ago. And so, I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are. If we go ahead.
I was just wondering if CAE has a model policy on this, Nick?
I would have to look and pull it up. In just looking over it briefly, the one thing that I'm a little concerned about and maybe having it as a policy just to cover ourselves is good, but there are definitely some elements that are obviously remnants of the past in the administrative regs. So if you look down like under acceptable slash unacceptable uses, one of the unacceptable uses is, you know, waste wastefully using resources such as file space. And like that clearly is a harbinger back to when you had shared district drives and things like that. And it's not really you know, as big of an issue. Obviously, other other stuff that, you know, is in there is still important, but the way it it's framed with, you know, the following activities are prohibited on any school district's information systems and networks. And just our ability to actually police that when we're distributing devices that students are using at home. That's something where I I'm a little concerned. You know, how much of this is still reasonable for us to enforce and actually enforceable?
Correct, I would agree.
I have a question. This policy is only for use of internet at school, correct?
Well, that's where it gets tricky because the way it defines ownership, electronic monitoring, monitoring, information systems and networks are the property of the Board of Ed. And so that would include, you you could say that that includes by extension devices. So if you are sending devices home with students, even if they're using that device on a non-school network. You know, back back when this policy was originally adopted, yeah, because that's the only place that you had school devices was in school.
Right. And the whole idea that says internet access, that almost to me seems like we would have to make sure that every school device that's sent home has internet access.
I think it might be useful to look at policies from schools that have been doing sort of bring your own device. Given that we've just given away a couple thousand old devices. It were more akin to that now than than this model of you come to school to use a computer.
I was just trying to look up and see if CAE had a model policy on this, but I don't remember the login password for CAE's site. So and I don't want to announce it publicly on yeah, on a live stream. So I will, I will try to look into that. I I think a good recommendation might be to ask to have Jeff and MIS look over this and see if see if we can find them a sample of what CAE's policy suggestion might be, and then ask him to sort of bring forward recommendations on the administrative side of it. I think the broader policy statement is still relatively accurate in the sense that, you know, we're supposed to be using this for ethical and legal ways, and it's supposed to be, you know, advancing access to educational resources and materials and all of those things. But I think the administrative side of it is just out of date. So that's that's my feeling on it. Other thoughts?
I think what you proposed of a model policy and taking another look at it, I kind of feel like this distance learning stuff might be with us a little longer than we think. Or that we hope.
Yeah, and I also think that it's definitely shining a light on some of our blind spots. Okay. So I'd recommend asking Jeff to take a look at that and maybe getting some thoughts back to us for the next Policy Committee meeting on the administrative side of it.
Are we tabling this to the next meeting or does it?
Yes, yeah, just it'd be basically it'd be postponing this till the next meeting. Because we don't have really a good draft to adopt or forward to the board. So I think we need more, something a little more solid before we go forward.
Nick, just to clarify, that wouldn't need board approval, though, even if we tweak the admin procedures, right? It would just be a cabinet matter?
Yeah, I was about to say administrative procedures usually are they're adjusted by cabinet as needed. But it'd be good, I think it'd be important for the board to at least see this, even if we're not approving it, but having it come back to policy so we can see.
Yep.
Okay. I muted myself and then started talking. Geez. Next item on the agenda is use of social media.
Yeah. So again, I think, you know, since we're we're in some new platforms, we should probably look at this. This one is more recent, more up to date, but there's no mention to Google Meets or any of the group Google platforms we're currently utilizing. So I think maybe that we look at adding that language in just to cover ourselves. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I definitely agree. Looking very specifically because the term social media is very nebulous. And there are definitely educational resources such as Class Dojo that a lot of districts are using, including ours that you could say in many ways are like a social media, right? Because parents connect to it, teachers connect to it, you post things to it, you comment and like things. So I I think maybe under where it says communication with students via social social media, we need to identify the difference between what are board-approved or not necessarily even board-approved, but district-approved resources and non-district-approved resources. So even if it was said like, school personnel are prohibited from socializing with students outside outside of school on social networking websites that have not been approved by the district. And then where it says like, the use of social media websites for educational instruction instructional reasons may only be initiated with the prior written authorization. That's not really like, I don't think we're getting written authorization for every, you know, classroom teacher who's doing flipgrid or you know, it's really more like the district is saying, these are the things that we're using. Thoughts from some of the admin? Perhaps Damon or Mike?
I was gonna, I'm not admin, but I would, I would chime in in saying that I think the way it's worded, it assumes people on Facebook, et cetera, right? So with what we're So with what we're doing now with the social networking websites where Google Meet, et cetera, Zoom, that would be teacher directed. So if something were to stay in there, something along the lines of district directed or teacher directed for means of education and that would cover it.
Other thoughts?
I think, I think similarly, maybe, Mark, we can, we can look at this, run it by academic special ed and, and make some recommended changes for next meeting.
Yeah, we definitely could. You know, I reached out to the attorney at Cave for updates, but she didn't respond in time. So I'll follow up with her.
Okay, so, so we'll have some recommendations for the next meetings that work for everybody?
It works for me. I'm, I'm sorry, I would chime in better, but I, I can't access the, the packet and stay in the meeting. And so, so I, yes, I will contribute to the discussion when it happens. I just, I like to read as opposed to, to take the audio and give the feedback. So, and I can't, so. But yes, I will contribute, academics will contribute to the discussion. And yes, I agree, it seems, it seems outdated. It seems there's pieces that need to be updated for sure.
Yeah, I don't think this one's as bad as the other one. The other one clearly needs work. But this one, I think, given the fact that we're in these, we, you know, in this different realm and, and I agree, I don't think it's going to go away. I don't, it may never go away as far as we may be, now that we've sort of let the genie out of the bottle with respect to providing services at home, we're going to see more of this. And then even for kids who, you know, are homebound for whatever reason, you know, you know, we'll be expected to provide these services. So I think bringing this to the, to the 21st century, that's probably a good idea. So.
And I think you have to be our age to know what MySpace is.
Not true. Not true.
What, are you claiming to be younger than me?
Well, I, I am. I am.
Sort of like the beta, beta of it, right, of, of.
Well, the fact that LinkedIn is mentioned on here, like that's, that's where the kids are going to go and hang out with the teachers is on LinkedIn. But the other thing that is like just not really captured, I think, in the way the policy is currently written. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge is so many schools now have Facebook pages. And they, and they're active and they are very good at engaging the community through those. So it almost like this policy seems very much a you shall not. And I think whatever we draft needs to have a little bit of that around the things that clearly shouldn't be happening. You know, disclosing, disclosing of student, I, you know, student information without parent permission and things like that. But I think it also should be talking about what are the appropriate uses for it? And like, yeah.
I would, I would also suggest that we look at the current parents, whatever they sign for technology use or do not follow list. I don't know what New Britain has that parents sign, but that has to be in accordance with what this also states.
So I can speak to that on, on, so we did receive recommendations in a draft from Shipman and Goodman, which they actually provided to a lot of districts for providing online services for kids. So for special ed kids in particular, families, it's assumed that they'll be participating unless they choose to affirmatively opt out. Okay? And so those, and you can see, you can see it, it's on our website. It also went on the Facebook page, I believe. And, and we also emailed it to all their families, our special ed families with with who have, we have email addresses for. And actually, this week, to the ones we don't, I'm making a robo call to the phone numbers we have of those families, providing that information or how they can access it. So there is an example of, it is on our website right now under people service. You can see it, it's in three different languages.
Thank you for joining us, Violet. We're actually down at D right now. We're talking about use of social media. And with this one, as with the previous one, the recommendation is that it's going to go to cabinet and around academics and all of that for possible changes, revisions. We discussed sort of broadly some of the concerns as we saw it, and they're going to bring it back next month for, with a version to go with.
Sounds good. Thanks for the briefing and for your patience.
Oh, not a problem. So that, that is actually the last item on our agenda. The one other thing that I just wanted to quickly bring up, and I wasn't sure if this was going to come up under the graduation requirements. And Merrill, Violet and I were on a call with the commissioner a couple of weeks ago. And they were talking about pushing for sort of for this year for a pass fail and pass, pass with distinction and fail. And the one thing that I wasn't sure, I didn't see it in our policies is whether or not we have a set grading policy that specifies A, A+, A-, et cetera. But I think especially for at least quarter three and definitely quarter four, that's something that we may want to look at if we haven't decided to go that way already. It's just another thing that's going to help minimize barriers to students.
Sorry, go ahead.
We have, I, I didn't, and you know, Nancy, I obviously can't be here tonight, but we have made that change for, for the district. We're going with pass, pass with distinction and incomplete. And, and some, looking at some summer options that probably will not be traditional school with a teacher sitting with twenty, twenty-five students in front of them. But some, some are options for those students that end up with an incomplete. That information was communicated out to our teachers on Friday and that decision was made in collaboration with the teachers' union, the administrative union, and actually was a strong recommendation from Sal Escobalas, who, you know, we invited them to the discussions and Sal took, took a little bit of a lead on that and strongly advocated for this pass. We do want to keep pass with distinction and, and incomplete. So I, I, I thought Nancy may have shared that in one of her communications to the board. Kind of updating on where we're at, not a formal communication around a power. Maybe, maybe I just saw it in other places, but that is a decision that was made in collaboration with the, the two unions. And that's the direction we're going for the rest of this year.
And thank you for correcting. I misspoke when I said fail. I meant incomplete. I did want to ask either Mark or Laura if we have anywhere in our policy where it specifies it. So if we have to make a change to our policy, that's something that if we walk in at the next meeting, I think is probably an okay thing. I don't know if it's actually enumerated in any policies around grading. So if there is a need to change a policy.
Okay, so let me understand the question. Are you asking if, if that we have a policy around grading that enumerates that these are the, the specific grading procedures that we use? And if those are being changed again for this circumstance, similar to what we're doing with the graduation policies that we, that we would need to bring that to the next policy? Is that what you're saying?
No, bring it straight to the board meeting.
Bring it straight to the board meeting. Okay.
Because we need to get it in place.
Yep.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we've checked off all the boxes.
There is a grading policy. We just need to read the grading policy and see if there's, if there's language in there that, that will be changing through these recommendations. Okay.
Yeah. And Violet, you had something, Dad?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that info on the pass incomplete, the decision has already been made and it's been publicized because I've been sharing it and stuff all day. And I know there's a policy somewhere, but I don't know, I don't know the board policy right away, but I know, and one of the administrators can correct me if I'm wrong, there's definitely flexibility because high school students can take a course as a pass fail, actually as a choice. And some elementaries were moving toward the standards grading and things like that. So I know that there's, there's definitely quite a bit of flexibility in the policy that already exists. I just don't know the wording off the top of my head.
Yeah. And I also want to make sure that pass with distinction is something that we have in there as well. If we're going to be putting that on transcripts, again, I, I don't want anything to get in the way of our students. Okay. Anything else any board members want to bring up at this time?
Yes. So I, I missed all of the other stuff, but I knew that we would be talking about graduation today. And I just wanted to put out there because I actually brought this up last year and then it kind of got lost in the shuffle, didn't get brought up. And I, I totally forgot about it myself to bring up at a policy committee meeting or something, or another committee meeting to start out with. But as we think to the future of graduation, I had asked about why maybe the rationale behind New Britain High still doing the two different colored gowns for boys versus girls and those two lists in the program. And, you know, last year, by the time I brought it up, it was too late for that year. And that's probably the case now regardless of what way we're going with it. But I wanted to bring it up today because graduation was on there so that it, it can hopefully be something that we don't let slip through the cracks to at least discuss one way or the other for upcoming graduations. I know that there are definitely other high schools around the country that have done away with that sort of system. And it's just kind of everyone, one color and alphabetical or whatever. So that's, that's the one thing I wanted to bring up today.
I think that's a very good point, either possibly going to one color or going to a pick your color perhaps, or?
Yeah, I agree. It seems, it seems out of line with the times right now. And, and.
We certainly, we, we certainly can do that. I, I'm not sure if we can do it for this year, but just to note that we, some, some students do self-identify. And, and so, so this is not, we don't need to talk about it. We do, but, but we have evolved, I guess minutely, and certainly we need to look at, at this. Damon, you can make a note of that. And I'm sure the reason it's being done the way it is because that's the way it's always been done, but that's certainly not a good reason.
Traditions.
I have to say though, I do like the two colors. I do like having two colors, but, but I like the random identification or the choose your color or something. But I do like having two.
I'm sorry. I think Violet brings up a really good point because we made a lot of changes to the policy concerning gender bias. And so this definitely support all everything that we already did a couple of months ago in the policies.
Oh, yeah. No, definitely. And this has been, this has been something the board has been working on for several years now. Making changes over the past couple of years. Well, if there's, if that was the last thing that anyone had to bring up, looking at Violet. Giving a thumbs up. Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to a close then at six nineteen. And the curriculum committee will be starting at six thirty. So that gives everybody a ten minute break. I'm going to go try to eat a calzone. So Kristen, if you want to stop the recording and stop the stream. And then what?